Call to order the special city council meeting for Monday, July 1st, 2024 at 4:30. I'd like to welcome everybody to the council chambers for this reorganizational special meeting. At this time, I'd please ask you to silence your cellphones or put them on vibrate out of respect of the proceedings here this afternoon. Moving on to the first item on the agenda, that is the roll call.
Burlingame.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pitner.
Here.
Padrigula.
Here.
Ross.
Here. Item two is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, it's also kind of traditional that when we have a crowd like this, we always welcome them back in September for the public hearings on the budget as well as question and answer on July 28th on the budget. A little tongue-in-cheek humor there. Anyways. So moving on to item number three on the agenda, and it's a, it's a kind of tough, you know, we have some outgoing council members that, you know, I know my letter to the, letter to the residences last week spelled out my comments, I think, as well as it could. First of all, Dr. Steve Padrigula, you know, you've always been that calm in the storm for me. I've always reached, you've always been there for me. You've, I've reached out and you've always kind of, not so to speak, talked me off the ledge, but you educated me in something. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I also really appreciate you have been, in my opinion, the most well-prepared council member that, that I've served with. And you pour your heart and soul into this and, and it showed. And I thank you for that. And since you live right down the street from me, it's going to be fun to see you out in the neighborhood. So, but I've got, I've got a plaque for you, Steve, and I've got one of the mayor's challenge coins for you. So.
Thank you very much, Tom. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Before we get to the comments, I do, I just want to finish with Scott, you know, and like my article said in the paper this last weekend, you know, it's, not many people know this, but, you know, I supported the guy you were running against. And that shows you what kind of pull I've got. But, you know, after, after you were elected, we sat down, we visited, and I think the expertise, the insight, the background that you brought to the council is, was remarkable. And as I said in the paper, two years is not enough. I hope you stay engaged. And you did good work. The work you did, in particularly on the childcare committee, is going to resonate for quite a long time. So Scott, on behalf of the, the council, on behalf of the city of Minot, thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your two years of service to the city. And I've got a plaque and a coin for you as well. So at this time, we will go by a seniority. And at this time, I will hand the microphone over to Councilman Padrigula for any closing remarks.
Thank you very much, Tom. I spent a good deal of time thinking back on the years I've spent on the council, and I wanted to share some remarks. I've written them down to make sure that I don't forget anything important that I want to say. Reflecting back on the past four years, I wanted to strike three themes: gratitude, admonition, and hope. My opening theme is that of gratitude. First, to the citizens of Minot for the opportunity to have served them for the past four years. Second, to our city staff who work very hard to provide basic municipal services. I particularly thank those who work under adverse circumstances, such as cold, snow, mud, or darkness. My special gratitude goes out to those in our police and fire services who daily put their lives on the line for us. Third, to the members of this current council, especially the mayor, for their collegiality and dedication to the welfare of the city. My congratulations to the newly-elected council members and best wishes for a successful tenure. Fourth, to the members of the press who have covered our proceedings. In particular, I want to mention the following: Josh Walzki for his energetic muckraking, Rob Port, the forum's excellent investigative reporter and political columnist, and Jonathan Starr who conducted extensive candidate interviews. With corporate restructuring and Jim Olson's retirement, local television news coverage has diminished, although Joe Skorshevsky does his very best at K M O T. I want to particularly single out Jill Schramm, Minot Daily News Associate Editor, who has provided remarkably accurate objective and timely reporting for the many, for many years, and whose work is deeply appreciated. I highlight the work of the press to report on what the city does and to hold us accountable. These days, many individuals and forces attack some of the basic institutions of our society, including law enforcement, an independent judiciary, election integrity, and a hard-working civil service. Some even go so far as to call the free press, quote, "the enemy of the people," close quote. This is a total perversion of reality and an extraordinarily dangerous position to hold. In reality, a free and vigorous press is the bulwark of a free society and our democratic form of government, and it deserves our gratitude and strong support. My second theme is to admonish, meaning to counsel, caution, and instruct. While I agree with the three new members of the council that, quote, "we can do better," close quote, and that there are important similarities between a successful business and responsive government, I must point out that there are also fundamental differences. For one thing, while the goal of business is generally to make a profit for its owners, the purpose of government is to serve the public in general. By necessity, a public service servant has to focus on what is best for the entire community, not just one's friends, political party, or ideological allies. Also, we need to look at a much longer timeframe: years, decades, or even longer, rather than just aim for a profitable quarter or year. An open mind, wisdom, and discernment are called for. The issues that come before the council are often complex with no simple or obvious solution. To effectively address our city's issues, you need to take a broad perspective and look at a situation from different points of view. Looking through only one lens will narrow your focus and limit your ability to honestly weigh alternatives. At times, a, quote, "conservative," close quote, lens may help you see most clearly. However, at other times, a, quote, "liberal," close quote, or, quote, "progressive," close quote, point of view may be most effective in seeing the solution to a problem. If you are too strongly wedded to a particular political ideology, you will lack the flexibility needed to function effectively and responsibly represent all the people. Appreciation of diversity is a real strength. George Washington, in his farewell address of 1796, cautioned about allegiance to factions and combinations or associations rather than to the public good in general. He warned about the dangers of parties in the state, which is of increasing concern given the tendency of some to become openly partisan in their politics and the increasing polarization in our society. Related to this danger is the influx of large sums of money into the political process, even at the local level, which can threaten the integrity of those in office and adversely affect their objectivity and allegiances. For example, I recently discovered that a local political action committee or PAC had raised over $304,000 in the past couple of years, and that two council candidates were closely associated with it. The business that one of them, one with them owns received over $37,000 from the PAC. I'm used to the way it was in the old days, when you passed the hat around at a picnic or held a bake sale to raise campaign funds, not where wealthy individuals or large sums of money held sway. For the record, I have not asked for any contributions for at least the past six years, and the most I ever received from an individual or couple was $100. A recent former president has decried, quote, "the swamp," close quote, that exists in American politics, and I agree with him, particularly when it comes to the potentially corrupting influence of large sums of money. Twenty-nine individuals gave $1,000 or more to this PAC. Apart from this, two individuals gave a total of $7,000 to one candidate in a single day. This is a lot of money, and I think the average citizen would be surprised and probably disappointed to learn that, quote, "the swamp," close quote, is seeping into our local politics. As a clinician, part of my job is to help my clients understand the things that are motivating them and influencing their behavior, and to make conscious and deliberate choices rather than being influenced by other forces or outside factors. As a forensic psychologist, I am keenly aware of factors that might adversely influence my judgment and compromise my objectivity. Knowing that a person has given you this much money will undoubtedly influence your judgment. Even if you think you will not be unduly influenced, looked at it, look at it from the donor's point of view. Do you really think that someone will write you a check for $3,500 solely out of the goodness of their heart and without expecting something in return? Scripture, after all, warns us that, quote, "the love of money is the root of all kinds of evil," close quote. While a check for $3,500 may not lead to love, it could easily lead to infatuation. My final admonition has to do with the increasing intolerance and hostility in our civic life. Voter apathy and cynicism are nothing new, but my sense is that they are increasing along with rigidity, intolerance, religious zealotry, and outright hostility. We need to restore and maintain comity, civility, cooperation, and principled compromise. At the very least, we need to abide by George Washington's faith expressed in his 1790 letter to the Hebrew congregation of Newport, that our government give "to bigotry no sanction, to persecution no assistance," and that, quote, "everyone shall sit in safety under his own vine and fig tree, and there shall be none to make him afraid," close quote. My third and final theme has to do with faith and hope. While I do not want to impose my deeply-held beliefs onto others, I feel some obligation to clarify what they are and to encourage the members of the council to carefully examine their own guiding principles and actualize them in their actions. As for many people, the Sermon on the Mount is the foundation of my moral principles, particularly as expressed in the Beatitudes. Concern for the least of these has been at the core of my professional work and also what I have tried to accomplish on the council. On a more secular note, I am guided by the observation of the eminent North Dakota historian Elwin Robinson, that being, quote, "on the prairie emphasizes the worth of the individual, where each is needed and each can do his part in the upward struggle of a rural society," close quote. I continue to be deeply influenced by the motto of the school I graduated from, quote, "that the better self shall prevail in each generation and reduce its successor to a higher plane of life." Let me end by expressing my gratitude ultimately to the founders of our country, who, relying on divine providence, established a republican form of government that is still the hope of the world and the foundation of all our cities and states ever since. Building upon that foundation, our challenge is to perpetuate those ideals, institution, and processes from our council chambers through the halls of Congress. As some of you may know, my parents were political refugees to America. I learned from them what evil tyrannical governments can do and what a particular blessing liberty and democracy can be. I have tried to serve in a manner that helps repay the debt that my family owes to this country. I believe that every citizen has an obligation to serve their community and to participate in its shared governance to the best of their ability. This is an important and very personal process and activity for me. I am deeply appreciative of the opportunity to serve and the blessings that we have been given. Thank you all.
Thank you, Steve. Scott?
Well, as, as Steve, as you said, Tom, Steve is oftentimes the most prepared, so he had well more prepared and, which more to say than I do, but I will briefly just make a few comments. First off, I also want to start with gratitude. I want to start with gratitude for all the city staff, all the way from every level that has helped make me feel welcomed and helped educate me during my time on this council. I, I think that they are our public servants, they are our neighbors. They're people that deserve a huge amount of respect, and I hope that I have served them well during my time. And regardless of what happens going forward, I wish them nothing but the best and, and success in all that they do. I want to give gratitude to the other members of the council and the folks up here on the dais. I came in as a newbie that asked a lot of questions and tried to get up to speed as quickly as I could, and I always felt welcomed, whether or not people had, as Tom said, supported me or maybe didn't. That never mattered. The second the election was over, those things didn't matter anymore. It was about serving the people of Minot. And your patriotism and dedication to this community has always been us inflicting to me and has meant a lot. And I'm truly, truly grateful for each and every one of you and, and the time that I've served with you. Give a little bit of shout out and gratitude to my employer who helped make this possible by allowing me to be gone oftentimes during work and to start early and stay late on days when I wasn't doing city council stuff. And of course, to my family, my loved ones, the people that are most important to me in the world, the reason I do everything I do. Yeah. So thank you to each of them for that time. I also wanted to shift to a little bit of congratulations. And today's date doesn't belong to myself on my way out. It belongs to the people that were elected and are going to be supporting the city of Minot. I'd like to congratulate each of you for your election. Your, your, the responsibility that you've, are undertaking that you'll be swearing into tonight is immense. I thought about it as I was driving over here today. When I first was named executive director, one of my mentors told me, he said, you know, the thing about being in a leadership role like this is, no matter what happens, Scott, it's always going to be your fault. And there's a certain amount of that in city council, too, is that no matter what happens in the community, part of being in a leadership role is it's probably going to be your fault. But those of us that have sat up here and those of us who have engaged in it understand that we're all trying to be successful and we all have visions for success. And I will be hoping for everybody on this dais, whether they voted for me or whether or not they replaced me, I want to see you succeed because when you succeed, Minot succeeds. And that is something I care tremendously about. So I wish you nothing but success in everything you do. And with that, I will close my comments up and just thank you all for the opportunity to serve the people of Minot.
Again, Scott. Now, moving on to item number five on the agenda, that's adjournment. Is there, we have a motion by Mark. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Steve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. We are adjourned.
We are opposed.
We are.
All right, it is 4:49. We will, I'll ask Chaplain Brian Walls to step forward. We will start the process of swearing in to our, our new council, new council members. We will do that one at a time. So first off, we'll ask Rob Fuller to step forward to take your oath of office.
And right over here.
And then after your oath, Rob, you can, you can take your seat.
Please raise your right hand, left hand on the bicep. Eat after me. I, Rob Fuller.
I, Rob Fuller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Alderman for the City of Minot, North Dakota.
Of the office of City Alderman for the City of Minot, North Dakota.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God under pain and penalties of perjury.
So help me God under pain and penalties of perjury.
Next on my list is Scott Samuelson.
Hi, Scott Samuelson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Alderman for the City of Minot, North Dakota.
Of the office of City Alderman. Of the office of City Alderman.
For the City of Minot, North Dakota.
For the City of Minot, North Dakota.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God under pain and penalties of perjury.
So help me God under pain and penalty of perjury. So help me God, under pain and penalty of perjury.
May I take yours?
I, Mike Blessam.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Alderman for the City of Minot, North Dakota.
Of the Office of City Alderman for the City of Minot, North Dakota.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under pain and penalties of perjury.
Under pain and penalties of perjury.
Chaplain Walls, thank you so much for helping us take part, take, take part and lead this very important ceremony. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven on the special city council meeting agenda, that is roll call.
Blessam.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Janser.
Here.
Olson. Here.
Pitner.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Samuelson.
Here. We do have a quorum. Moving on to item number eight, I will open up the nominations for the position of council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Lisa.
Thank you. Before I make my nomination, I, I think it's important for all of us to remember that the Office of Council President and the Office of Council Vice President are strictly in place to have a continuance of governance. There is no special authority or special rights given to either the council president or the council vice president. They're there to fill in if the mayor is unavailable to, to lead a meeting. And we had to make that clear several years ago, and I just wanted that to be a reminder. And so I will nominate Mark Janser to be council president, and the reason that I am choosing Alderman Janser is he is our, our most senior city council member now. He has a lot of experience, he has served as council president in the past, and I believe that in your absence, Mr. Mayor, he would be a very good fill-in, so that would be my nomination.
We have a nomination, is there a second?
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. Do we take discussion on this?
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson.
Yes.
Pitner.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
No.
Blessam.
No.
Fuller.
No.
Janser.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item number eight, the election of, or, I'm sorry, item number nine, the election of city council vice president, nominations are now open for the position of vice president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would nominate Lisa Olson to serve as vice president.
We have a nomination, is there a second?
Second.
We have a nomination and a second, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
I just, again, just want to, reasoning for my nomination, I think Lisa, over the last couple of years, her work on the HRC Committee, the Child Care Committee, she's shown that she can lead this council or lead the, lead the city of Minot, whether it be on a committee or, or in the council, so I would, that would be my justification for the nomination.
Any further, Mike?
Yeah. Just real quickly, I just want to explain real quickly the votes on, on the president role. Mark, you've been my choice, and I, the vote and the no vote was not anything about you, and I'm glad that you did win that. One of the things that I was hoping for was that we could have a discussion around whether the new direction the people have asked for justified one of the new candidates coming on to be the president, and to help set the agenda for that going forward. So I just wanted to explain that quickly. I also wanted to add, I will support Lisa for vice president, I think she's a good choice for that.
Anyway, Mark?
If I can just respond, Mike, I, I think that, you know, we all have to cooperate in, you know, doing the city's business, and I'm certainly open to taking all the input and having all the conversation that we need to relative to what you're concerned about. So I think, I think we'll be able to get along reasonably well.
Any further comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Pitner.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
Yes.
Blessam.
Yes.
Fuller.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, president and vice president. Moving on to item number 10, that has already been issued. I met with now the council members on your assignments, your committee assignments, we just have to put this in, into the agenda, so. Next on the agenda is item number 11, which is adjournment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion by Lisa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by?
Fuller.
Rob Fuller. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned until 5:30 for the regular city council meeting.